Community, in Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Bassett.
Here.
Bailey.
Here.
Beverly.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Miller.
Eggly.
Here.
Approval of questions, the council minutes for May twentieth?
Make much difference.
Second?
Roll call.
On the meeting minutes?
Yes.
I got one thing. On, well, we've been talking about, Bruce was talking about the repeater out here? And Eric Bassett asked Limper to get a quote, see if the quoting coded necessary, and we have gas lines, and I don't think the repeater runs on gas lines?
It was the, it was a generator.
Yeah, doesn't say generator, says, they're talking about the repeater.
I see what you're saying.
Oh.
Yeah, it was about the generator.
Yeah, okay. Other than that, I'm good.
Roll call.
Martin.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Eggly.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Got a payment list for June in front of you, any questions on that?
With that, Playground World West LLC, I thought we had a lifetime guarantee on that for the installation.
Not so much, well, installation, yes, ended up being an install issue. That one goal started to lean towards the court. And I called them, they said, yes, it would be, if it was an install issue, they would warranty it. Once they excavated, they realized that there was still quite a bit of water at the base of that. Like that concrete down there never really quite cured. So they added more concrete to it, so we've got, we have about nineteen more bags of concrete now, it's got a pretty good base on it. Where that goal sets, it's kind of a hole. We had the discussion prior to them doing that work, once they had it excavated. The normal install's five ninety-nine, he asked for fifty percent of what the normal install fee would be to cover the cost of the material and labor. Some of the labor to do it, so that's what I had agreed upon.
Any other questions?
Make much difference.
No second?
Roll call.
Eggly.
Yes.
Miller.
Yeah.
Martin.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yep.
Bailey.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
All right, next we have planning commission had met, any questions about what they dealt with?
Corey, if you would, talk to Jared. Bailey and the other people used to make, give us a map and show us the lots and stuff. If you could touch spaces with him on that, kind of give us a better idea of what we're voting on.
Having to get something around in this community base, what that is.
Okay, appreciate it, thank you.
Do we vote on lots, or does it end at planning commission?
That's what I thought, yeah, we don't vote on that anyway. But it would be nice.
Well, we can, if we are opposed to it, it's, I've never been opposed, but we can, that's why it comes to us.
Any council committee reports?
Finance committee just met like an hour ago regarding the TASER program, the de-escalation program. So we're getting some numbers from them to see, they seem pretty expensive. I'll just submit my comments.
Ordnance committee is meeting on Wednesday, at five thirty.
All right, anybody else committees coming up? Corey, you have administrators?
I don't have any. The cold drink job coming along pretty good?
Yep.
No problems, they've run into any hidden secrets under the ground or nothing?
There was a four-inch cast iron leg that came off the main intersection, it must have fed an old fire hydrant that they had banged into and busted that, probably took about an hour or so, hour and a half to repair that. And then once that repair was done, once they got far enough down to put another valve in, then that four-inch just came out of there altogether. Other than that, it's been pretty good.
Super.
You guys may have mentioned in the past about people, I think actually Tony did too, about people driving their golf carts on the concrete down to the ball fields. People are still doing it, I was down there last week watching my nephew play, and somebody just came through on a golf cart. They were going slow, but that's kind of besides the point, so.
Well, I noticed that there's no signs up front. So if most of the people are coming in from the grass, there's no signs in that area where they're coming from that would warn them that it's not allowed.
Yeah, I don't know if we could come up with some kind of like movable base, so that way they can kind of.
We would just put them on the posts, their signs are ordered, they're just.
Okay.
Okay. Boy, Tony had mentioned that.
Okay.
I will mention, since we're having discussions, the Detroit Elastation, which I haven't heard back from Van Cress, but we have had some issues with those pumps plugging up, and we are finding wash rags, socks, towels, they all have Van Cress logo on them, so. Hopefully, I hear something back, if I have to go out there and meet with somebody, I will, but they're gonna have to get a, get a hold, you know, get a grip on this, so.
I'm gonna have to hire security when them old people flush their toilets.
Good. Rachel was not able to be here tonight, we have nothing for her to read. Department head, it's up to that point, chief, Benny was not able to be here tonight, so.
I have something for him, he started telling me that the works tower is actually going to be up and running hopefully soon.
Good.
Frontier is coming for a walk through with it.
That's good news.
Didn't have the time. Echo has graduated, he is on duty, and he's already been sent out and found a missing juvenile. He's doing a good job.
Good.
And he will be here the next weekend to meet you.
The chief or the dog?
Thank you. Fire EMS?
We're gonna do this part together. Yeah, because of, because of what we're about to do. It is an honor when a dad can present his son at a job that he does.
That's not your dad.
You know, it's a good thing we're on X TV, that's all I must say. It is my, it is my honor and my privilege to recommend my son, Brandon, for fire EMS to be hired. With that, Eric?
Hello. It's a pleasure, I guess, actually, hold this position, you know, for what it's worth. I feel green in this, I've only been here two weeks, so I ask for y'all to bear with me along the ride. But anyhow, tonight's purpose is to present, one, couldn't be here, but present the five gentlemen behind us. The association voted these young guys in, and we brought it to council for these guys to accept y'all's blessing. The first one's Gabriel Lane, who is there. Yeah, let's see, Gabriel. That's cool, you can just raise your hand. Brandon Hamilton is the second one. Aiden Champion. Chase Reling. Jeff Wappelhorse was also another applicant who we also passed through and getting y'all's blessing from the council. He's in Japan, so he was unable to be here. And then Bruce represented his son, Brandon, Brandon is the other one. We're actually bringing these guys in, which is giving us more fire personnel. We were down some numbers like double-digit, we're still down double-digit, but with these new group, we're making strides and trying to boost up our numbers, which I think is a great thing. The goal for these guys coming in, where there's a privilege to y'all, is to get these guys into a beginner level, volunteer level firefighting, which is a class in August, two weekends in August. I've already kind of brushed them on, on that, whether they're able to do it or not, but it gets these guys certified and on the floor quicker than waiting around. The class starts in August, but the deadline is the fifth of July, so this is why we're trying to move to get these guys in, to get them up and ready for the fire service and enjoy the Hicksville Fire Department. The other thing I was wanting to discuss, as part of new business, is y'all talked about grants. I spoke to a previous grant writer for Hicksville. He brought amazing couple ideas to me, and of course I have to bring it to you guys. The first idea was, there's a grant out there to replace the tower and the engine. The tower is, the engine, five oh three, and our tower's the oldest apparatus since that's in that day. The tower hasn't moved in I don't know how long, it had its hydraulic issues, we don't hardly use her. So basically, I think she just sits there and collects dust, we don't use her appropriately. As far as the other engine, she pumps like a beauty, but she don't hold water, and there's been mechanical issues with that. So the grant writer and I briefly talked, he was on vacation, but he gave me a little bit of his time. His proposal, or grant that's out there to replace these, was with a Quint. A Quint is also just called Quintuplet, it has five options. I think it'd be great for Hicksville as far as replacing those, so he said, take two of those away, replace it with a Quint. The purpose of a Quint is a combo engine and a ladder truck. So what it does is, the five options are, it has a pump on it, that tower doesn't pump. It has fire hose on it, that tower doesn't have fire hose on it, but it has hose to be able to connect to a hydrant to pump water through the aerial ladder. It has ground layers, which our engine has ground layers. So the whole purpose of that is to incorporate the tower and the engine together, so it's called a combo engine. His cost to write the grant is twenty-five hundred, he also mentioned to me about replacement AEDs. If they're older than eight years old, there's a grant for that, which is important for us as well. Lastly, he also said there's a grant for our exhaust system. And what I mean by the exhaust system within the station is, some stations have overhang exhaust where it can plug into the pipe of the engine exhaust, and that alleviates the, it helps with the ozone layer, it helps with all that smoke and however that's within the station. And he said that with those three things, he tells me we can't go wrong with it, and basically we pay the pennies on the dollar when it all set down, but of course we gotta do our work on the other end as far as having our ducks in a row, our reports, all different things like that. And know for him to propose it because if someone else asks for the same grant, and they got all their reporting, all their stuff in a row, they're gonna get it just based on they got their ducks in a row and we don't. Other than that, there's not a whole lot that I need to present tonight, just outside of the grant conversation I had with him. He told me that after you guys sat on it or considered or thought about it, then we could talk more after he comes on vacation to actually see what to represent, but I will ask you guys that having a Quint would be a huge asset to the department. I know we got that pretty tanker over there, he's also the grant writer who was part of that as well. Now with that being said, we alleviate to the apparatus and game one, and as far as the utility or the use of that Quint, if we was to get it, would be unremarkable, it would be great. Not for just the village, for outside, because there's not a lot of departments around, it has a combo, a combo engine or Quint. You know, it can either do one or the other, or however, so just basically we'll eliminate our pieces of apparatus going out the door. I will reconvene with that at a later date, if y'all decide that, hey, we might entertain the fact of seeing what this is all about, because he didn't want to talk numbers and all that sort of thing, until you guys decide yay or nay, as far as that goes. Lastly, with these new guys coming in, we have, we have gear issues, we have gear that's outdated. Now as far as us going to a burning building or a house, we may temporarily get away with it, but the legality of it is major. So along the line, I will have to give some numbers and see what the cost is, but with these new guys, even with these guys that are coming in, we have guys who's already over there and their gear's expired. If they get caught without gear, with gear that's expired, and something forbid happens, we're in a whole, we're in a whole shoe of trouble. So I put that out there for you guys to look at it and think about that as well. Other than that, from the fireside, I have nothing else unless you guys have questions.
Can you bring us some numbers on the gear, I mean, I know we had this conversation before, and it's, there's gonna be quite a bit that needs purchase, but I'd just like to see what those numbers are.
I could do that, I would say that it's probably a decent number as far as cost-wise, but depending on how it is, you know, I'm willing to take something better than nothing. So if we can do half a chunk of gear for the people who has already expired or going to be expired soon, and get that taken care of, then I'm hoping that you guys will, we can either have the funds to gear the guys later. I'm not asking for everything all at once to supply everybody, but again, safety is the top priority as far as over there. And that's what I want to represent, safety first, and then everything else falls into play.
Absolutely, let's, let's get those numbers, Cheryl, let's have the meeting. I think it's important that you guys do not use expired equipment over there.
Yeah.
It is not safe, I know that when I first became part of the fire committee, it was discussed that you guys actually had openings for up to fifty volunteers. More recently, you're under twenty, we've never really had a contingency fund for gear. So now, here we are way behind on gear purchasing, and it's gonna be a large upfront cost, but we cannot let that go.
Well, I, to add to that, the last time gear was purchased, from my visual and understanding, was right before Kramer Lab. He had got maybe five or six sets of gear, where I know someone came from Toledo.
Is that legit in his, I don't even know.
I'm not sure, then, I'm just mentioning that.
Six a year, his one, okay, okay, that's good to know.
So I would just mention that that was the last time, so whatever time, it was probably six months before he exited is when last time gear was, was, you know, purchased. So was too, some of the new guys, I was one of the newer guys, I got newer gear, but again, due to NFPA standards, all gear must stay, must also stay rated, you know, for protection purposes.
Correct, Cheryl just said six a year, so that'll be good information, of course, with budget time coming soon, and you have, Cheryl's gonna be your best friend with all this.
How long does the gear last from when you purchase it until it expires?
Typical gear, it, it used to vary, but now they say the average lifespan of gear is anywhere from, I don't know, three years, four years, maybe, depending on the wear and tear. So if you're like, if you're a career department, and you actually do quite a bit of the fires, like where I come from, in Columbus, you know, we got thirty-six fire stations, half of them, they bang on wax, they're always busy. Lots of fires, they get their gear, probably they get new set of gear at least every two years if not that, because it's just the wear and tear, and start wearing down, not because it wasn't good, it's just the wear and tear also helps it age. Now, if you look inside the tag, it may say, oh, it only tried to twenty twenty-five, but my gear's already ran to the ground, so I need replacement. And that's basically what that comes down to. Now, if it's somebody who don't hardly see any fire, don't hardly see anything, then the gear expires when it expires, but now you're just worried about safety. As far as that goes, if that one time happens that we're going to a burning house, and someone is either burned or injured, and you come find out that's because of their gear failure, so that's what makes this concern.
Can you, can you, after, after this guy gets back from vacation, you have a chance to, to talk, talk things over and, and kind of get a general feel for what you're looking at, and also on the gear, could you get with Tony, and we'll have a meeting? At least that way the committee, we can get a general idea of where we're headed and, and exactly, you know, instead of maybe do this, maybe do that, get more of a general idea of where we're headed with the thing?
I could do that, I'm more than glad to do that, now, he's out for two weeks, he.
Yeah, no rush, I mean, just, just whenever you can.
But we didn't talk big numbers because he was actually on vacation when I called him.
Sure.
He said, I'll give you a little bit of my time, but I'm, you know, I'm out west, you know.
I'm out west, leave me alone.
Yeah, yeah, basically, yeah, but he gave me about ten or fifteen minutes of time, gave me a brief overview of how important he says that these things could be to us and the assets, and the, and the good that could come out of it as far as replacing those two engines, because they are sick near, and we're not doing nothing with them, basically.
Well, that was the, the promise of when that tower truck was bought, was that if we have one, there's a grant that you can get a new one.
Yes, and that grant, and that tower is pretty much obsolete, so, as well as antique almost considered, that open apartment, that open compartment in the back of that tower is unheard of now. So yeah, we could ride down the street, and if somebody's going like, oh, wow, that's an antique tower truck, those, those have been outsourced for multiple double-digit years. Now, don't get me wrong, now, if we pull it out of the door and hook it to a hydrant, will she probably pump? Yes, she probably would, but how, how, how often do, do we use her? You know, that tanker is, is a, is a great asset, that tanker has three options, not, probably four. So add a Quint to that and eliminate two of them, we have, we have a perfect engine company, so to speak. You know, even the surrounding areas, would be a great asset to them as well, just due to those capabilities. But I will get those numbers and see what he's talking about, that he didn't want to talk too big until I present it to you guys.
Sure, that's, that's great.
Okay.
And I haven't had a chance to tell you, but welcome aboard.
Thanks.
Upon, we have to vote, right? There's six, right, so, can't remember.
So there's six total.
Six total new applicants to the fire department and fire EMS department with Brandon. I want to thank the staff, I know the staff prior to have been working on getting some new people involved, I want to thank them for doing that and bringing that to the table here, but I'm gonna recommend hiring or moving forward with bringing these all six applicants on to the departments, both EMS and fire, and thank you for doing that.
That's a question I had, I forgot.
Yes, sir.
When, when they do their training, is that Realsburg, or is it somewhere up here?
It's gonna be in Realsburg at the Ohio Fire Academy, they're holding a class for free. Free room and board, they feed them, they stay there for the whole weekend, it's, it's almost an opportunity that you can't pass up.
Oh, my goodness, yeah.
But the thirty-six hour class is just a volunteer entry level of class, but for me, that just gets them in the door because we still have two guys who's been here over a year and they haven't been on a class yet. So the hope is to try to get these guys certified so they could be more of an asset to us on the fire ground, instead of having to be quote-unquote slaves, you know, and doing the grunt work, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
So that's the whole goal.
Sounds great.
All right.
Now, Brandon, he's already got everything, right, does he have to do the training also?
He's, he's got a retest for fire, and EMS is, is gonna be a little bit more difficult, maybe.
I'll make the decision.
I'll save that.
Okay, roll call.
You gonna do them all at once?
Yeah.
One or two of them, I'd like to weed out.
One's not here, I'm gonna go.
Eggly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Well, gentlemen, thank you for being here tonight, thank you for volunteering for the fire department, thank you for the staff and everybody who's worked very hard to get all this done and bring new people to the department. Numbers are growing, both fire and EMS, so that is a blessing to our community. I know you're working hard to make us stronger, make us better, both with training, equipment, everything that you presented, so thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you guys for providing the service to our community.
So for the EMS side, just a few things, tomorrow the repeater will be here. So once that, once that gets installed, we will be doing some testing. I don't think that we're gonna be needing to test the actual tornado siren or anything like that, but yes.
Is, is that the permanent or the test, the one they're gonna test with?
The, the one that they're gonna test with, the one that they're going to test with is a loner, the permanent one, it was a sixteen week, was sixteen weeks out.
Oh, good.
So they're just gonna leave that one here, once it's tested, once, once we know it works, they're gonna leave that one here, and then when the, when ours comes in, they will be back to do what they need to do.
And still no reply from Farmer.
I talked, I did talk to Jerry, I did talk to Jerry, and I told him that, you know, that, you know, it'd be, if he would ask if there would be any chance that Farmer would put in some money, he said that he would ask. So that's, that's where we're at. Five eleven is back, however, it's got a major oil leak, so.
Come on.
So, yeah, so let's keep throwing good money into it.
How much did we throw in this time?
We only threw in like, about three thousand dollars, so.
That's not bad, that's a lot better than two hundred and forty thousand.
Two hundred and seventy-one.
Two seventy.
Seven one without her name on it, right?
Uh, where's the oil leak at?
Any engine.
Dude. Main or pan or?
I, I don't know, I, I've gotta get it up to Ford, to, for them to, for them to look at. Let's see, we had that, five eleven, the average response, the average runtime since the hospital has been shut down is now ninety minutes. So we took, we had one that was out at the, close to one of our, the edge of our territory today, that we ended up taking apart view. That was two hours, so just a heads up on that.
I heard that on the scan in Parkview, was that Brian or Indiana?
Fort Wayne, yes, we're down Fort Wayne because of, because of the situation, so. There is a class coming up with EMTs, it'd be a basic class. The class itself costs fifteen hundred dollars to put on. I'm looking, my goal is to have ten people to put in, so that's a very aggressive goal. So that's a very aggressive goal. So I've already talked to Cheryl.
$1,500 each.
$1,500 each.
Not the class.
Right.
Yeah. So, and it used to be, it used to be, I think, like, when I took mine, I think it was like $800. So.
At six months.
And the paramedic class is now close to $15,000.
Do we, we still do the?
The one year.
The deal, okay. Is one, is one year adequate?
I think that's, I think that's what you're going to get, you're going to get a year. Unless you, unless you say, look, if you pay half, we pay half, we'll put you on for, you know, you can, you can be here a year or whatnot. I mean, I don't know, I don't think that you'll have very many people want, offered to pay $750. I think they're better, I think.
Approaching me.
Right, right. I think their, their thought, the thought process would be, look, I'm here to do a service, I'll do my one year, and then, you know, the thought is, anybody that does a year, chances are they're probably going to stay a little longer. So, I mean, I don't, I don't know anybody that would just turn around and do a year and then say, you know, I'm done.
Where will the school be?
Williams County, unfortunately, I mean, unfortunately at this time. Now, I did talk to a couple people at the breakfast the other, the other day. If I can get a class here, which I am working on, if I can get a class here, I think I may be able to get some nurses to sign on. So with that being said, you know, it, I don't know everything that would have to go into it, but I will do whatever I can to get these classes here.
Bruce, that's still basic, right?
That's still basic.
Yeah, I was surprised, that email.
So the state of Ohio, for those, for, Tony had reached out to me to do an RN to medic. So the state of Ohio has deemed in their wise decision that a nurse, with a nurse who can do a lot of things, is no better than a basic EMT. So they have to start out as a basic EMT. I understand a little bit behind it, because emergency situations, emergency scenes are different than the emergency room. I get that, but these are nurses that we're talking about, okay? The nurses that are coming to me are some high-quality, top-notch emergency room nurses. And there is no reason, and I'm saying this to the state of Ohio, there's no reason for an emergency room nurse to not be able to go RN to medic without having to go to a basic EMT. So, so come on this, take a listen. Other than that, that's pretty much all I have, and if nothing else, I have to go.
Thank you, Bruce.
I don't see the area here. Fiscal report?
Police, Davis, and cash center revenue expenditures are okay, but main utility and inter-tax collections reported, you know, the section tax is still having a 2023 problem. In 2023, we were lucky to get some people who owed a lot of money to pay up. Unfortunately, when you compare it between reality of 2024, it makes our numbers look bad. But Kim has identified exactly what happened, and I can't tell you, but I will tell you that there were four people who paid up over the course of 2023, so hopefully this is our last bad number, the 20 negative. But we were glad to get that money last year.
Any questions?
I'll tell you about that.
Any questions for Cheryl?
And I need to see a crew moving April, she's going to be a part-time because she's not in the budget, to be from assistant clerk to assistant fiscal officer. Not to become the fiscal officer, but be the assistant to me.
I think that's a worthwhile idea.
She's learning, and she's already started.
She'll be cross-training, so she'll know everything you know?
I'll make my own.
Not everything.
I don't know.
Second.
Roll call.
Bailey first, I seconded.
Beverly?
Yes, ma'am.
Martin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Miller?
Okay, since you started, I'll say yes.
Yes, that's it.
Yes.
I know Abby just started with, been training with Dawn and everything, doing a really good job, she is really good with that.
But she's so quiet.
She is.
I appreciate that.
She's out there.
And I know April's been in back and forth with Cheryl, obviously, when I've been here, and she's doing a good job, so.
Past block and phone calls to Dawn, but I couldn't.
That's what April was brought on for. Two years ago, three years ago.
You got your letter for media com, any questions about that? Okay, I have just a couple quick things, finishing up with my report. I want to congratulate all the seniors who graduated this year in their surrounding areas, Higsville and Fairview, Edgerton, everywhere. I wish them well and success in the future, and we had another great class coming out of Higsville, and was able to attend the graduation, and did a fabulous job. And we just wish them well in their endeavors in the future, and hopefully some of them move back here and get work and raise families and everything else, so we thank them for that and wish them well. Summer concert series kicks off this week, June 2nd, theme is, June 6th, I'm sorry, June 6th. Theme this year is kind of ladies' night, the downtown businesses that have products and services are going to stay open. I know a couple people from the downtown district is helping with that. Maddie Lawson is the entertainment, it is held at the Huber Outdoor. Patio right there, I'll bring some chairs, Fat Pig BBQ will have their food truck there to buy food. It starts at 5:30 and runs till 7 o'clock, so it's about an hour and a half. And each year we have a theme on that kind of stuff. June 20th is kids' night, we're doing three hot dogs and hamburgers, the Fire Department's helping with some games and activities. Lifeline Connect Church is doing food, so Heidi Paxton will be there that night, so that's June, the two June events for that coming up. I want to thank the Fire Department and the EMS hosting another great breakfast this weekend on Saturday. A lot of people showed up, I got to help them a little bit, they'll have, everybody worked their tails off to prepare the food, and a lot of work in that, I don't think people realize how much work goes in the night before, the morning of. I mean, work late, come in early, and doing great breakfast for the community, so thank you for doing that. I'm not sure if I have anything else, so, anything for me?
Our next meeting is June 17th.
June 17th, council, yep, 6 p.m., so at that.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
No.
Oh, country.
I was asked to call an executive session for sale or acquisition of land.
I'll go with that.
Roll call.
Beverly?
Yeah.
Martin? Bailey?
Yeah.
Miller?
Yes.
That's it.
Yeah.
Yes.